All right, welcome to our Board of County Commissioners Special Meeting, April 17th. Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge.
We testify in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Campi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and we're going to do public comment after our presentations. So we're going to begin with Mr. Rob Lord from Cleveland Clinic Martin Health.
I got more.
After I handled them, I think.
That was the last roll.
That concerns me, Commissioner Smith. Good morning. Thank you once again for the opportunity to provide an update to you and to, oop, it's a little closer.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity to provide an update for the commission and for the community. As I said last week, we are operating under an emergency operations plan. Again, we continue to have adequate supplies, but we are conserving those supplies using the CDC guidelines for conservation of those resources. There's an unprecedented worldwide demand. I read something this morning that we've seen 1,000% inflation in the cost of those supplies. And I wish there was something as a society we could do about that, but certainly on a local level, I don't think we can impact this worldwide shortage. But we are very proud of the job that our team and that our organization has done to get those supplies, and we're working well with the state and others to stay on top of that. Something new, we are strongly encouraging all of our caregivers who are not directly caring for COVID patients to wear cloth masks. I have one in my breast pocket. And I would encourage all people in the community to do that. That protects others as much as it protects you, but we are trying to obviously prevent the spread of this condition. We're working closely with the health department and the emergency operations team. We've had a couple of things that have been done locally that, one was called out by the governor the other day. We're very, very proud of the cooperation. We've been able to get on top of a couple of situations that could have really blossomed on us, but we identified the first patient that came in. The health department and Cleveland Clinic worked cooperatively together to make sure that everybody in that location were tested and then isolated anybody who tested positive. We continue to develop our contingency plans. Updated numbers would be that we could increase our capacity by about 450 beds, both med surge beds and ICU beds, and we are continuing to work with the health department and others to develop alternative care sites. If we do see that surge of patients, it will be a challenge to our resources and to our team.
I just got a message that nobody can really hear you. If you could get a little bit closer. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I feel like I am on top of this microphone.
Yeah, there you go, I know.
The next step forward, I will have it in my mouth. The drive-through testing for Martin North Hospital continues. Again, I want to encourage people, after last week's meeting, we did have a few people that just drove up. They do need to call a phone number. That phone number is 772-419-3360. I'll repeat, 772-419-3360. It will determine if the patient meets the criteria established by the state and the federal government. If they do, they'll be tested. As of yesterday, April 16th, we had screened almost 12,000 people by phone and tested 1,345 patients at the drive-through location in downtown Stewart. Well over 2,000 in total. The test results, 1,571 Martin County residents have been tested through yesterday. We have received 1,510 results, which leaves a total of 61 cases pending. Give you the breakdown on that is 125 of those tests came back positive for Martin County residents only. 1,385 are negative. That's about a 9% positivity rate, so a little bit below what we're seeing on a national level. I assure the county and the community that we are doing everything we can to continue to speed up that process. We now have two types of testing we can do in our own laboratory. We do have limited supplies, so that what comes through the drive-through testing is still going to a commercial lab, but that time period now seems to have even dropped another day from five days to four days this past week. So they continue to improve, and we're getting those test results back quickly. But I want to assure you, we are on top of that and will continue to keep you updated. Last week, I was asked a question about visitation policies. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. That was a miss on my part, and I appreciate being asked that. But I was incomplete, so I want to go back to that if I could. So I will start with outpatient locations, because I did not really hit that last week very well. For our physician offices, diagnostic centers, rehab centers, those sorts of things, there are no guests or visitors permitted to accompany an adult patient unless the adult patient requires assistance, in which case they will be allowed one person to assist them. That person must be at least 16 years of age. They have to wash their hands before entering, after leaving, any clinical areas, inner waiting room. They will get tired of washing their hands. That's a good thing. The hospital locations, I did hit that last week. No visitors permitted, with exceptions for pediatric patients, one visitor, labor and delivery patients, one visitor, and end-of-life circumstances, we work with family. For obtaining health care today, there's some confusion. There seems to be a reluctance for people to seek out health care today, and yet the illnesses that plague us all normally without COVID are still around. And so we're doing everything we can to make that accessible as a system. If they were, physicians' offices are open. Our physicians are working. They're doing much of their work. The vast majority of our visits now are being done with FaceTime or Zoom or other things, but we do have in-person visits if it's necessary. But call your physician's office if you need care, and we'll make arrangements to do that. Again, we're waiving co-pays and deductibles during this crisis to try and make sure that nobody avoids that because of the inability to pay. Again, we're not doing elective surgical procedures at this time, but if it's deemed necessary by the physician and the patient, we will work with them, and we're doing several mini surgeries every day. It just has to go through a process to be determined if it's appropriate. For care for the first responders and the caregivers, I brought up last week that we'd started a philanthropic program for first responders and for our caregivers. Since that time, over $200,000 has been donated to that fund by the community. And so first of all, this is my first opportunity to thank that segment of our community has been so generous. I know that our firefighters appreciate that very much, and our law enforcement officers and our own people do very much. You can go to www.martinhealth.org and click on the COVID link. It'll take you to where you can donate and also provide a lot of information about testing, treatment, and visitation policies and other changes. We've also received a large number of donations of items. We're trying to coordinate that. If you visit ccf.org/COVID19, you can learn how you can help. In closing, I used a phrase last week. It's caught on a little bit in the community, so I'm going to use it again, crushing the curve. And what we are seeing is some encouraging data that suggests that our efforts are saving lives right now. I've also had some comparisons. People have thought because of this data, we've exaggerated, the media or whoever has exaggerated what they said. This is not SARS. This is not a condition that's just going to go away. It is probably the most effective disease transmitting itself from one person to another we've seen in our lifetimes, and we have to take it very, very seriously. As we move towards reopening the community, I would like to just offer a couple of things. The health department is doing an amazing job with the resources that they have. If, as we open this community, the most important part of this, I think, Public Health 101, is that we be able to do more testing, conduct surveillance, be able to trace the contacts of those persons who are identified as positive, and then isolate those people. To do that nationally, we probably need to add tens of thousands of people that can assist with the tracing. But it's not a terribly complicated job to train, and so that needs to be a focus of the CDC and the state. On a local level, they're doing an amazing job with the resources that they have. And then as we move forward, I would encourage us to be methodical and data-driven. We're expecting a peak in the next few weeks. We should, what we should want to see before we open things back up, I would think, would be that we hit that peak, and then we have a sustained period where we see stability or declining admissions in the hospital. Then we will know we have this under control, and at least hopefully we don't overwhelm the system, because when you open it back up, you're going to get some more infections. That's built into that, I would hope is an assumption. I would suggest we require masks to be worn in public by everybody. That permits me transmitting it to you if I'm wearing a mask. And require the social distancing continuing in some capacity. We're doing our part, and I know the county and all of the resources here are doing their part. We'd ask everybody who lives here to do their part by staying at home and social distancing. And finally, again, just my thanks to you and to the community for the outpouring of support. It continues to amaze me, and I stood out in front of the hospital two nights ago, watched the local Blue Angels and the Martin County Sheriff's Office on motorcycles and Stewart Police Department on motorcycles, and Congressman masked on a motorcycle with his daughter, and I saw my own people with their cell phones out videotaping it, and some of them with tears in their eyes. Thank you all for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Good morning, Rob. How are you?
Good morning. Good luck.
Question. A resident contacted me the other day and asked if you are or if there's a clinic or the health department, and if it's the health department, they can certainly answer. Is anybody doing testing locally for the antivirus portion of this?
Some, there's a, the Cleveland Clinic is participating in a trial, and we do have some antibody testing that's going on. We're not doing it in our lab here locally.
And so is there anybody locally doing it, or?
Let me defer to the health department, and I'll get back to you on that. I'll get more information on that.
That's great. I just, and if there's a, if there's, if there is a system or a structure, if that's something we can get online to let people know if they're interested in participating in that part of the process, that would be great.
Yep, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I had that same question. I read this morning that the sailors onboard the USS Roosevelt have all been tested, and they are overwhelmed, the ones who are infected are overwhelmingly asymptomatic. So antibody testing is going to be absolutely critical for us to understand how we can stop or slow the transmission of the coronavirus. Also, I just, an observation is that every emergency produces leaders, and Mr. Lord has been one of those leaders who's been produced by this emergency. Right, right, at the very, from the very beginning, we've asked you very, very difficult questions, when there was so much uncertainty, and you've always been candid with us and very forthcoming, and I really appreciate your accountability and transparency. I think that you've done a superb job. Thanks.
That, thank you so much. That's very kind.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Lord.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Echo those.
Next up is the health department. Kara?
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you once again for allowing me to give you an update today on our COVID-19 situation here in Martin County. We grate, I gratefully support, thank you for your support and partnership as well as with our Martin County Emergency Management, our Cleveland Clinic, our law enforcement, first responders. This is an amazing community and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Currently, the Florida Department of Health Dashboard is reflecting 142 confirmed cases here in Martin County, 133 residents and nine non-residents, four deaths unfortunately here in Martin County. And there is a total of 23,340 total confirmed cases in the state as of 6:00 PM last evening. Our health department staff continues to do the contact tracing as Mr. Lord has recommended. We have doubled in our staff as well as continued to expand our staff for that very critical means of contacting those individuals who may have been exposed to the infection. We also, on a daily basis, are calling our assisted living facilities and our long-term care facilities, our urgent cares, our rehabs, dialysis, et cetera. Prevention, we realize that the community is eager to get back to normal, so to speak, but it is really essential that we don't let our guard down and that we continue to practice all those prevention measures even as we start to open up this community. That is the best method to helping prevent the spread of this virus. We encourage everyone still to follow the governor's safer-at-home directives, especially for those individuals 65 and older who may also have underlying health care conditions as well as possibly be immunocompromised. We also encourage residents, if they become symptomatic, to contact their health care provider. Testing, I know that's been a big question, and so there's two types of testing. One is nasopharyngeal type of test. So we swab, and then that test detects the actual virus that a person is infected with the virus, active infection. And then we have the blood test, which you have been talking about, such as the antibody test, which of course will show that someone has been exposed and now has built the protective mechanisms for antibodies. I, there is only one test produced by the Celix company that has received emergency FDA approval. And I don't know of anyone within the community that is providing that, but I will keep you posted because I'm adamantly looking to see who might be offering that antibody test. As far as cost, as far as cost, I know that was a question regarding the actual COVID-19 test. That, there is no cost. The antibody test, there is a cost, but there is no, unfortunately, I don't know the dollars on that one. But the COVID-19 should be free for everyone. Now, what I am going to suggest is for those individuals that may be going to various facilities in the community is to call ahead and ask what additional cost there might be. There might be a visit cost, but I can't speak for them, but I will tell you that the COVID test is free. We know that recovery, recovery, people have asked me about that. Well, how do we know when someone is recovered? This really is, as Mr. Lord said, an unsettling situation from the standpoint, depending on, we've heard people have recovered within two weeks and they feel fine. Depending on the severity of the case, it could be anywhere from much longer, three to six to two months later. So it's really hard to give a specific timeframe on that. I will tell you, though, of the 142 patients here in Martin County who've tested positive, the majority are no longer in isolation, which is, you know, a good thing, and that count is cumulative. So the Department of Health also is sponsoring a public service announcement campaign at convenience stores and gas stations. The prevention messaging will be installed in areas across Martin County this weekend. The Department of Health's interactive dashboard, as you all know, with the case counts by county, it is updated twice daily. If they, if you go to www floridahealth.gov, that will bring you to our dashboard. DOH locally, we have a call center from 8 to 5, and our number is 772-221-4000, option 9. And also, the state itself has a 24/7 call center, and that's available by calling 866-779-6121. So once again, I just want to thank you all for your support and your continued efforts as we fight this spread of this virus in our community. Thank you.
Stacy.
I was watching last night the president's press conference, and he began to lay out the phased reentry program, and it seems like, based on even some of my colleagues' questions, that testing was going to be key to that reentry. Now, we know we're a small county, and compared to some of our other neighbors to the south, our cases haven't been as high. So it makes me concerned when I think about the logistics of that. Are we going to be prepared for testing when a lot of the resources have been going to those larger counties? Can you speak a little bit to what we're doing to make sure we're prepared so that when that day comes, whether it's the end of May or the middle of May, that we're, we have adequate testing to get our folks back to work?
Good question. Well, as you know, as far as for the Department of Health, we have limited resources, and our testing is specifically for a high-risk population, which is our skilled nursing facility and long-term care. And then for the other agencies within the community, that would be a resource request that's put in through our emergency management to request those specimen collections, and that's how the process would be.
Okay. AMI, okay.
Commissioner Smith.
Sure, thank you. Caroline, good morning.
Good morning.
So back to the antibody testing portion, and maybe if you don't have the answer, that's fine, but what's involved in the process? So if somebody thinks they are and they get tested, is it then, is it a blood donation that people are doing to take something from the blood to create more antibodies? How does that?
So if I understand your question correctly, you're referring to the antibody test itself?
No, well, no. So if you're, if you're, well, okay.
Go ahead.
So there's the test, there's a test.
Right.
Right? That's a blood test?
Yes.
From that, you're going to get some kind of result that says you may be an antibody carrier? Or you may have the type of?
Yes.
Of something makeup?
Yes, it will show the immunoglobulin, that's the type of antibody that's like the little army that fights the virus, and you'll see that in the blood. Yes.
And so what happens? Does someone then donate blood because they have the antivirus? Or is it just acknowledging that that person is?
So are you referring to, I know there's been some discussion about the plasma? Is that what you're referring to? Okay. So that would go through one blood, and that would be determined through them from the standpoint of if someone had the virus and then can donate their plasma, and that would be their screening criteria and such. And the plasma itself, well, if you've had the virus, the plasma itself, that's where they would test to see that you have built up those antibodies. And then what that plasma does is if, you know, a critical patient, many times, they will administer that plasma to help increase that person's fight against the virus. Sorry.
So that's the curious part, because what I guess I'm trying to get to on the testing side of this is that, is there a need for it? Or is it, is there, if 100,000 people were to test and that they had the antivirus build up in their body?
Yeah, the antibodies.
Or antibodies, right.
I think one of the other challenges is because this is so new, also, the other thing would be to know how long those antibodies remain in someone's blood system. Yes. Because as you know, with many other vaccines, sometimes you need a booster, like with the chickenpox vaccine, right? So it's still kind of early to really determine that.
I guess what I'm trying to get out there is that the person who called and asked, I didn't get the full explanation, but I'm assuming that she wanted to donate or to be part of a process that she felt like she was helping build up the supply if there was a supply needed for antibodies.
Yeah.
And then I guess what would confuse that is if there is a process and if there is a need, it would seem to me that the state or the feds ought to be funding that testing versus charging someone for it. I mean, you can, you can make the, you can make the stretch that if somebody were thinking, look, I'm trying to do something good for our community, for society, I want to donate whatever I can donate to help that process, but you're charging me to do it. Not you, but I mean?
Right.
The system. So I just wonder if we should be communicating to the state or to our federal delegation or somebody saying, look, if this is the process, if there's a process where you go get tested, you contain the antibody, and then that antibody is then asked for or said, look, if you donate a pint of blood, that'll go into making 100,000 or 10,000 vials of antibody serum, specimen, whatever, that 100,000 people could get tested from, or I mean, could get injected from, if that's how that all works. I just?
Yeah. Again, I guess I would say that one blood would be the source for this type of discussion.
It might be helpful that if we can dig down into that a little bit further, because if one person's asking, there are more.
I would be happy to.
And then the next question would be, if that's how it works, are we setting up a regional system or structure? If we don't have anybody locally other than one blood, if that is the one place to, if that's the place to go, that's fine. But we should start maybe to explain how that system works and get that out to folks so that if people do want to participate in that, if they feel that that's the one thing that they could do to be the most helpful, there'd be a straight-line explanation of how you go from A to B to C, if that were possible.
Okay, I will definitely follow up with you on that, and I'll look into it further. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
I don't know that you get enough kudos, but?
Thank you.
The health department, you know, years ago, there was a point in time where there was a, there was an absolute want to do away with our health departments at the state level, and there was a huge crunch of pushback on trying to make that happen. And in some cases, in northern Florida, our health department is our health deliverer. And I think we had something like 16 counties or 13 counties that that was the only source of health care delivery in their, in their world. And so thankfully, that kind of went away, that attack on that system, but I'm glad you're still here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's really a privilege to be here and to be part of this community. Thank you.
So we had a conversation with your staff, and I actually learned something last Wednesday that I, I get a lot of calls, and I don't think a lot of people understand that the swab test is not to clear you, that even if you, if you use that, you would still test positive with a dead virus because it doesn't distinguish between live and dead. People don't understand that, that, and that's obviously why you're not tested without symptoms. So that's, I don't think a lot of people understand that. Could you expound on that a little bit to, I get a lot of calls on this, why aren't they testing everybody with the swab test? Well, that doesn't really accomplish a whole lot.
Right. Well, I think there's a number of reasons for that, and one of them, of course, is the number of specimen kits.
Can you talk a little closer to?
Number of specimen kits.
Right.
That has been somewhat of a challenge, as we know, since the beginning of this situation. And I believe they still have, we still, and follow that strict criteria regarding the CDC guidelines as to who could be tested. And it's mostly due to that fact that we want to make sure that people who are symptomatic are tested. And, and then, you know, hopefully, as we expand testing, then that will open up for other individuals who maybe aren't symptomatic to be tested.
But they could literally be over it and still test positive with a dead virus.
That's true.
So the antibody test is the test that we need mass-produced for the masses, yes. So I mean, I just want to clarify that, because to be honest with you, I myself was Because to be honest with you, I myself wasn't real clear on that subject.
Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, are we seeing any geographic clusters?
You mean, within our county?
Yes.
Not particularly. Not particularly. You can look at the zip codes. I mean, you might see, you know, there might be more in one area than another, but it also has to do with the population of that area. So, no.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of you.
Next up is our sheriff. Concierge service there. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners, madam.
Yep. You're gonna have to.
A little closer. There you go.
Here we go.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Chairman, you asked me to be here this morning. I'm glad to be here. I don't want to take up any time of yours that you don't need me here for. Would you like me to give you a quick state of the county sheriff's office involvement or just be available for questions?
Yes, sir, if you could do that, that would be wonderful.
Just where we are?
Yep.
I would, just briefly, since we began tracking our calls for service for this COVID situation, we've had 500 calls into the 911 or our routine call line for violations being reported. We have, I know a particular concern to you all have been the golf courses. Throughout this last week, we can report the majority of golf courses have been in compliance with your regulations. Of course, people always like to push the envelope to see how serious we are, you are. And so, the first couple of days last weekend and through the week, we've had some little bit of problems, but nothing we couldn't handle and nothing education didn't help with. We'll continue spot checking. Of course, the weekend will bring additional golfers here. And so, our community-oriented policing units, which you are all very familiar with, are going to be tasked with routinely going out and just checking license plates to make sure we're not getting the Palm Beach residents here. The boat ramps through the week were quiet. Of course, we continue to patrol them, but we got, we had really no calls for service there. We do expect increased pressure throughout the weekend coming up. And so, it will require additional patrols. One of the things on the boat ramps, because we will open them only for commercial use this weekend, is that we get pressure from people that fraudulently obtained commercial fishing licenses. We have no tolerance for that. We don't think that's fair to people who are legitimate commercial fishermen nor is it fair to pleasure boaters who are obeying the rules and staying out of the boat docks. And so, people coming in have to show they have a license. They have to show they actually have tax receipts. Your parks employees have taken the lead on doing most of that, trying to get voluntary compliance. And where there's any pushback at all, of course, we send a deputy there. The beaches, this week, we saw a significant decline in violators. People were parking haphazardly in non-approved places and kind of walking across the roadway there to get to the beaches. That has diminished quite a bit through the week just because we have engaged with them and asked them to leave. Nobody pushes back on us there. We do expect a lot of pressure this weekend. Keeping beaches closed in this weather is a lift. I mean, it just is. It will require significant manpower and people power for us throughout the weekend to keep the beaches from turning back into an open beach. And so, we're staffed up for that pressure. The sandbars, constant, was a constant source of problems for us all. I think the image of Martin County having hundreds of people on the sandbars while the rest of counties north and, well, certainly, south of us were closed was particularly onerous to you all and I think to all of us from a public safety standpoint. The sandbars have been very quiet through the week. It has required constant vigilance from us. We do have to patrol to keep those sandbars, both the north and the south one, free baders. We expect a tremendous amount of pressure this weekend, even though our pleasure boaters don't have public access to boating docks. They certainly can put in other boat docks that are open. I do understand, I haven't confirmed it, that Port St. Lucie or St. Lucie County is opening their docks this weekend. If that's the case, there'll be hundreds more boaters pushing down on us to get onto those sandbars. So, we're staffed up as much as we can, and we should be able to keep people from using those sandbars as group congregating areas, which is not only a health hazard, I think our health department would agree, but it also doesn't look good for us as a community to not be playing our part in trying to stop the spread of this. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, go ahead.
I hate to see your staff turned into babysitter, babysitting, but apparently, that's what you're going to be doing a lot of in the upcoming weeks. Is there any area where you wish that you had more enforcement abilities? Are we, did we, are we ignoring something that we shouldn't be ignoring?
No, Madam Commissioner, I think we have, we certainly have the enforcement ability and the enforcement rights based on the emergency order from the governor and your directive. So, we don't need any more authority. If your question is more narrowly, is there more manpower needs? I would say the answer is no. Thankfully, right now, our community-oriented policing units are able to divert there. Also, our calls for service continues to be way down on our routine calls for service because the streets require it, the bars are closed. If you'll keep the bars closed from now on, I'll reduce my staff and I'll give you back some jail space. But being that that's not likely, we were able.
America tried that once already, about a century ago. Didn't work well.
So, yeah, so we do have enough people power to get the job done. I would be in trouble if the boat ramps and the beaches stayed closed, but other opportunities for people to congregate opened and caused an increase in calls for service back to our normal levels there and then still have to cover the beaches. That would be a pretty big lift.
Thanks.
Mr. Campey.
Sheriff, thank you very much. I watched the video that you did with Ms. Krysta. Was very informative, but I know that not everyone has the ability to see that video. Can you share with us my concern from the very beginning, beyond the obvious physical health issues, are the mental health issues? And in the video, you gave some very sobering statistics about domestic dispute calls and Baker Act calls. And if you could explain what that is? And then if you could explain to folks that don't know what a Baker Act is? Thank you, sir.
Sure, yeah. And I have calls for service logs and empirical data that bear out the fact that the calls for service for mentally ill patients, so acting out so badly that they have to be transported under the Baker Act involuntarily for psychiatric evaluation, along with calls for service for domestic violence have skyrocketed. They are just way, way disproportionate to any normal case flow we've seen. That is our call now. We go from, we go from male health call to suicide threat call to the other category I mentioned, male health call. Just constant, back and forth. If you turn on our scanners and listen, that's what you're hearing. We've had contact wounds suicides almost every day and by gun. We've had overdoses, gore, and people off their meds or having some kind of psychiatric incident. And so, we're, that's where the pressure's been. But because the other calls for services are still so far down, the bar-related calls and crashes, we're okay. We're not holding calls. So, if your question was, "Do I have adequate resources under the current system to answer 911 calls and calls for service?" The answer is unequivocally yes.
Thank you. Can you also just share with folks that I'm pretty familiar with the fact that a domestic disturbance or domestic violence call for your personnel are one of the most dangerous calls that you can respond to? Is that correct?
Well, yes. Certainly, on a routine basis, day-to-day, obviously, you know, a bank robber with hostages and a gun would be. But yes, call the call on a daily basis. Answering a call where you have a couple fighting, invariably, invariably, it will be the husband. It's not always the husband. But more often than not, the husband is violent, the wife or the significant other is in danger, and somebody's called 911, they've heard the call. That's very unpredictable because you have somebody in their house where they feel like they're the king, and they don't want law enforcement in there. We've been very fortunate. And, you know, none of my deputies have been hurt recently in any significant way because of those. But every call these deputies take is dangerous. You know, you walk up on a car at 3:00 in the morning with tinted windows. You have no idea who's in the car and why they're in the car or what they've just done. They know all of that, and the deputy doesn't. So, just about everything they do out there is dangerous.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions right here?
No, I just, I just want to say a quick, you know, thank you for what you and your deputies are doing. Even in times like these, I noticed that, you know, we had a situation where one of your community policing officers identified a family that was in need and was able to connect them to the right sources. So, I've seen so many times since I've been sitting up here the proactive way that your guys and gals approach problems. And I think it's just fantastic, and you deserve a lot of credit for the way they handle those things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I'll pass that on, and then maybe in closing, I would at least like to say this. We talk a lot, and the questions have been about our road patrol deputies. But I have almost 200 correctional personnel locked up in a 700-bed facility 24 hours a day with people that do not want to be there. And they have taken extraordinary measures. And by God's good grace, we have no reports of COVID coronavirus in our jail, which is phenomenal. They've done all kinds of, taken all kinds of precautions, and it's paid off. And so, we would be in a catastrophic situation if it breaks out into jail in a significant way and affects either inmates, which we have a moral obligation to keep well, or our jail personnel, our correctional personnel. So, we continue to work hard and to pray that it does not get into our jail because that would be, that's our nightmare scenario. That's a lot. I know we talk about the sandbar and we talk about, but, look, that's child's play. Really, it is compared to other coronavirus getting into a correctional facility. And with that, I'll close with this last thought. You know, in 1918, commissioners and law enforcement throughout the United States found themselves facing a worldwide pandemic and had to build the planes they flew it. And you all have had to do the same thing. And so, I know that some people will watch this and Monday morning quarterback you and say, "Well, if I was the administrator, if I was the chair, if I was the commissioner, this is what I would do." That's a lot like watching a football game and being the perfect quarterback after every play is called. So, you all have had an enormously difficult job. You have to do it on a public stage. I thank you for your support. I have felt every minute of every day that we've done this, that you had our backs and that if we needed additional resources, they were here. Thankfully, we haven't needed them. And so, on behalf of the sheriff's office, thank you all for what you're doing here.
Thank you, Sheriff. We really appreciate it. Okay, next up, Michelle Jones, Emergency Management Director.
You're gonna have to get really close, Michelle.
Really close.
Yeah.
And really slow.
Really close, really slow.
And a little louder.
And a little louder, okay. Three tips, got it. Good morning, Michelle Jones, Emergency Management Director. As we continue to monitor, as we continue to monitor COVID-19, we've participated in daily conference calls with the Florida Division of Emergency Management. We've held twice-weekly EFC briefings, unified command meetings and updates, and have provided with some modeling to forecast our potential impacts. Currently, it appears that we may see our peak hospital utilization within the next two weeks. And while Cleveland Clinic has been doing really great work to identify appropriate space to handle any potential surge, we just want to remind residents that over the next two weeks, we have the opportunity to, as Mr. Lord put it, "Crush the curve by staying home as much as possible, and when not at home, practice social distancing, wear a cloth-based mask and wear a cloth-based mask in social settings where measures, social distancing measures are difficult to maintain." As mentioned before, the president released his initial plan for "Opening Up America Again," which recommends employers should develop and implement appropriate policies for social distancing and protective equipment, temperature checks, testing, isolating, contact tracing, sanitation, use and disinfection of common and high-traffic areas, and minimize business travel throughout this process and continue to encourage telework whenever possible and feasible. Symptomatic people should not be allowed to physically return to work until cleared by a medical provider. And we were provided with the outline of that report late last night. So, I can give you guys a synopsis, a more detailed synopsis, if you'd like. And Carol, with United Way, I believe, is going to discuss the efforts of our Community Recovery Task Force. But we've seen an increase of need in needed support from financial assistance to food distributions. And a lot of our county departments are continuing to support those residents by working alongside these nonprofit partners to provide meals to those in need. And we've provided reemployment applications to those nonprofit partners to share when providing food distribution or financial assistance. And those applications are also available at FedEx. And once completed, can be dropped off at FedEx locations who will ship them free of charge overnight to the Department of Economic Opportunity. And they have been working on that application process online so that that's available as well. The Florida Department of Children and Family announced that on April 21st, SNAP recipients can purchase groceries online with the use of an EBT card. And all participants are automatically eligible to participate in this program. That's a great reminder to try to purchase groceries online if possible or to wear a cloth-covered cloth face mask if going to a grocery store. The Florida Department of Elder Affairs has instituted Project Vital, which is virtual inclusive technology for all, which utilizes virtual technology to help with the self-isolation experience for residents in the assisted-living facilities and nursing homes and is partnering with the Alzheimer's Association and other industry leaders to distribute tablets statewide to help mitigate those feelings of isolation. The Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles has extended certain expiring Florida driver licenses, commercial driver licenses and identification cards. And the Social Security Administration announced that supplemental security income recipients will automatically receive their economic impact payments directly from the Treasury no later than early May. And those with no qualifying children will automatically receive their payments. But those with qualifying children under 17 are encouraged to go to the IRS website to validate their information to receive the benefit for qualifying children. The Martin County Clerk of Cork's office announced that all jury trials and jury selection have been suspended through Friday, May 29th. And the next juror reporting date is Monday, June 1st. The clerk's facilities are closed to walk-in visitors. However, essential services remain in place for protective injunctions, Baker and Marchman Acts, judicial waivers, and risk protection orders. And other services can be provided by phone or email. The property appraiser, tax collector's office, and supervisor elections offices remain closed to the public but are offering services electronically or by phone. And our Community Information Center continues to field calls about 70 a day and have fielded over 1,800 calls since opening on March 18th. The Community Information Center at 772-287-1652 is open daily from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. We are continuing our regular communication efforts with our Martin County update videos, which are on MCTV starting at 4:30 p.m. each weekday and are posted on social media, the website, and emailed out. We are accepting questions from the public, which can be emailed to covidquestions@martin.fL.us. And we will address those questions in our video updates. Friday is a weekly wrap-up that we provide. We have a daily report, which is posted each night on social media and the website. Our website is constantly updated throughout the day. Our social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, are updated with information as soon as we get them. And we've been doing Alert Martin emergency notifications, which residents can register by texting ALERTMARTIN to 888-777. And our communications team is also sending out the community update through weekly emails. We've also updated our dashboard, our COVID-19 dashboard. We've also updated our dashboard, our COVID-19 dashboard, which is at martin.fl.us/covid19dashboard and that has some county-specific data, like our cumulative cases, age distribution, new cases by day, all specific to Martin County. We've received some questions and I'd like to offer some clarification on the dashboard. We've asked, had the question asked, why isn't the recovery data there? And recovery can mean a lot of things. Some countries say that you've recovered after 14 days from infection, even if you're still sick or have passed away from the virus, because their models just subtract 14 days out and then mark those as recovered. There's no accepted metric for recovery and FDOH doesn't expect to have such a designation and our information is pulled from the FDOH dashboard, just localized, so we don't have that information on there. And as a reminder, the number of hospitalized on there is a, is an account of all laboratory confirmed cases in which the patient was hospitalized throughout. It is not a up-to-date, accurate representation of those that are hospitalized at this moment. And we're asking our community to continue to take this seriously, take the time to stay home if able and connect virtually with family and friends. We also want to remind residents that if you're experiencing a medical emergency, please do not hesitate to call 911, answer the questions of our dispatchers honestly so we can ensure we're taking the protective measures necessary and that individual can then be assessed and assisted by our first responder. So we've asked our community to stay home and stay safe for us, that also means that we are and we continue to be there for them. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Could you just repeat the Alert Martin number for folks, how they would get on the chain there?
Absolutely. So if an individual texts ALERTMARTIN as one word to 888-777, they'll be able to be registered for that text notification update.
Great, thank you.
You can register online too, right?
You can also register online, martin.fl.us alertmartin and that'll get you to online registration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we have Carol Dietz from the United Way.
I'm gonna take these when I leave. That's gold right there. Good morning, everyone. I just want to give you an update on what nonprofits are doing in our community. This is a really big job, but many hands make light work. On a daily basis, the school district is providing breakfast and lunch on average to over 2,200 children in our community. In mid-March, that was 500, now it's over 2,200 and it fluctuates every day. In addition, the Kane Center and Meals on Wheels is providing over 500 meals to seniors daily, which again, a lot of people are volunteering for that and it's a great service to our community. Also, local churches, the Boys and Girls Club, the Banner Lake Club, they've all been providing dinners at night for families and that combined total is 1,600 individuals are being touched by nightly with dinners. On top of that, our food pantries, the House of Hope and the Treasure Coast Food Bank are providing 21,000 meals a week to families in our community. There has been a 30% to 40% increase in demand on our food distribution system, our pantries and our feeding sites. Although our resources are stretched, through the Community Recovery Task Force, we've real been trying to monitor and get everyone to work together so that we can coordinate who's being served and have a reduction in duplication of efforts. What the days and weeks ahead of us will hold, we're really not sure in terms of how the food supply will be, but within partnership with all of us, that we're going to continue to help the residents here in Martin County. Last week, I just put a call out for everyone for sewers and I have my mask with me. I want you all to know that we were in, there was an influx of calls to our office and we've provided over 1,700 cloth masks throughout our community, which is a lot and we're still sewing, there's sewers out there still providing them, if anyone needs one, please let me know. Any seniors or shut-ins that need assistance, there's agencies and volunteers that are out there that are willing to deliver things to you, to go out and do shopping, we have volunteers that will do that, we want to keep our most vulnerable population at home and we have people that will help. Also, financial assistance, if there's anyone out there that needs financial assistance with basic needs, like paying your rent and mortgage because you've been out of work and you've been affected by the COVID-19 crisis, please call, there's help there through Salvation Army and House of Hope and the United Way's COVID Relief Fund is reimbursing them, so please give us a call. Also, they, we've talked about numbers and calls of people looking for information, I know the 211 hotline has been receiving calls about 600 to 700 a day from Martin County residents for information, so please, if you need assistance, you can call 211 and also the county helpline too. Any questions for me?
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you very much. The organizations that you named are very well-known, but there are other organizations in the community that are doing Herculean lifting as well and I know that there is sort of a collaboration amongst not-for-profits, but even the smaller ones that are not as necessarily well-known, that are still struggling, what, I've received a couple of calls from some folks that are reaching out to people in the community, they've seen an increase, but they're not part of the established support system, if you will. I know that on our information at the county level, we list some of those organizations, so people are contacting them. What can some of them do before they run out of their own resources as well?
So there, there's a call that happens Monday, Wednesday and Friday now at 3:45 and there are lots of agencies on that call and so we have other food pantries and whatnot that are on the call and the bigger organizations, the ones that we're talking about, are helping those littler ones if they ask for help. There is a coordination, I know the Treasure Coast Food Bank has been more than willing to help any of the pantries and I know House of Hope has offered and Salvation Army has offered for the smaller ones that don't have that name brand to which you're speaking about, that they can get assistance. So we've got pantries in Hope Sound that have been looking for assistance, we've got pantries in Port Salerno, so really, they just have to ask and someone will help feed or, you know, be a part of the solution and that's really what this Recovery Task Force is working on to make sure that our pantries are served.
Thank you very much, I'll, I'll reach out to them and tell them to ask.
Commissioner Smith. So to that point, where would they call and how would they communicate?
So they can either call our office or they can call Michelle's office, I'm gonna blame it on Michelle, Lisa and Michelle at your office and they can be part of the call and then we can help figure out where they can get resources.
And that number, email would be?
So from my office, it's 772-283-4800.
If, if they just want to email ema@martin.fl.us, we'll get them connected.
Yeah, just, just so that we're coordinating, so that everybody kind of gets the same message because it can get very confusing very quickly if.
Yeah, yeah, ema@martin.fl.us, that any incoming information, send them our way and then we'll get them added to the calls and we'll send them over to Carol.
Fantastic, thanks.
If I could just add one thing, there's a lot of talk about a food shortage, we've been doing a survey along with the Community Foundation and this task force and from what we can tell, from what the agencies are telling us, right now, we're okay. There is a little bit of concern because the Treasure Coast Food Bank receives a lot of their foods from Feeding America and if you think about this crisis, what's happening, it's, it's happening all across the country, so the supply at Feeding America, which is like the mothership is what I call it, is having a harder time getting all those supplies, so maybe it's limited of what you can get, but the supplies will be there, one way or another. Anything else?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I do not have any speaker forms. Mary Kay, no speaker forms? No public comment? Move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Smith.
All set, it's mine, thank you, Ms. Trump.
I'm all set, one, one thing that I was thinking of asking Carol or, or maybe to be thinking of is that I don't see that there's an influx right now of people losing their rentals or their homes, but down the road, there could be and I, I would imagine that your coalition is looking at some of those resources for, you know, housing assistance down the road. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Campy.
Thank you, I had, I just wanted to bring a question that I believe most of us might have gotten as a general email to the commissioners and we get a lot of those emails every week, but some of them really stand out as questions that I would share with them on not understanding exactly what the answer is. And so there was an email yesterday from a gentleman that was talking about, there was originally an extension on the 2019 property tax deadline till April 15th, but it had not been re-extended. And so when you talk about, and this is a, from what I remember in the email, a small business owner, so he and I guess the businesses, they've paid all of their other taxes that are necessary, but that large property tax bill from 2019 would mean wiping out his, his financial, you know, reserve and also potentially maxing credit cards and I didn't have the ability to reply simply because I'm not sure, obviously that's handled at a state level, but if, Ms. Krista, maybe for one of your videos next week, if you could, I know you've been trying to incorporate and include other constitutionals and other information, if you could potentially have the tax collector on that can talk about, you know, both residential and business, what some of the tax ramifications still are, you know, we're hearing, everyone's hearing a lot of talk about relief and programs and stuff like that and even what we just heard from the United Way is mostly for individuals and families, but businesses, I know that there were the, we had Denny Hudson here to talk about some of that, but even just something as simple as paying a large property tax bill, I personally believe that there should be an extension on that as well, but that's not my call, so if you could have the tax collector come on with one of your visits to answer some of those questions would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
Thank you very much, which leads, segues into my next comment, which is, you know, I mentioned it to the sheriff about financial hardships and emotional hardships because I think once this initial, and there are a lot of people talking about this nationwide, that once we get past this medical urgency and this medical emergency, that there will be a financial emergency and there will be an economic emergency and, and families are struggling, you know, he had given us anecdotal information, but I think, you know, these are very stressful times for everyone. Normally during hurricanes and things like that, but we can see the beginning, the middle and the end of a hurricane or of a national emergency, but now it's everywhere. And, you know, if you, there's two types of people, I believe, there's the people that don't follow the news because it's just overwhelming and too much for them to take in all of the details that are 24/7 on the news media channels, but then there are the other folks that completely absorb into it and I, and I know even just from folks that I'm friendly and familiar with, that it's a stressful time and families are struggling because as this wears on, people, you know, their financial resources are becoming depleted. We're entering into the second month of everyone making mortgage payments and car payments and student loans and the things that have not been either postponed or forgiven or for some people, even those stimulus checks have become a very stressful time because there are a lot of people that believed everyone was going to get one. And then when the checks don't show up, you start realizing there are plenty of qualifications that need to be met for people to get that stimulus money, so even if you were hopeful that a $1,200 check approximately was coming your way, some people are realizing they didn't qualify, which adds to the, the emotional stress. I think having the kids, whether they're, you know, toddlers or, or young adults, home for now a month, you know, the, the novelty of having everyone home and all together is, in many cases, starting to wear off and I think that there's a stress level for, for family members that are not able to see their loved ones as much as they would like to, folks that are in nursing homes or like Mr. Lord said, even if you were going to attend a doctor's appointment with a loved one, the loved one has to go in alone and you would have to wait in your car and I don't think people were prepared for that. But then on the other side of the coin, there's people that are spending too much time with loved ones. And so I just want us to continue to focus on that. There are resources that are available in our community, maybe another one, I know you're doing this daily, so if you're running out of content ideas, another one might be to have some folks from Tykes and Teens or 211 or any of the other organizations, Inner Truth Project, Safe Space, all of these other organizations that we're so fortunate to have in our community, maybe they can address not just, hey, call us, but maybe they can give you some suggestions on coping mechanisms and on what to do. We have eliminated a lot of recreational activities that people normally would use for their ability to have some stress relief, but we haven't eliminated all of them. You can still go out for walks, you can still, you know, potentially ride a bike or, or engage folks that you haven't seen through social media or Skype or Zoom. I went to a Zoom birthday party with folks that I grew up with and, and, you know, we're all over the country and so the ability for us to get together with childhood friends is nearly impossible, but because of this, we were able to spend probably an hour with, you know, childhood friends from all over the country now and it was a nice relief. So I think, I just want to focus, you know, with all this excellent information we received from the experts, the five commissioners are doing the best that we can, our staff is doing the best that we can, but we're not experts on those issues, but we all understand what it's like to be under stress, we all understand the, the difficulties with really close contact with family members or the opposite of that, not being able to see your family members. I just want to reiterate an expression that I had read a long time ago that said, after this is all over, all that will really matter is how we treated each other. And that's not just your family members and your friends, it's your neighbors and strangers. I think we've all started to read their stories in the newspaper where people are losing their tempers in the supermarkets. A gentleman pulled a gun in a supermarket because people weren't wearing face masks. We need to keep in mind that we have to work through this financially, but just as important, work through this emotionally and mentally. We don't want to see tragedies come up from, you know, sort of a secondhand tragedy, once removed from the COVID crisis, a crisis within our community that will last for years afterwards. You know, the financial ramifications and the emotional ramifications will last for years afterwards and if we work on it from the beginning, maybe we can minimize some of the stress that we'll see in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hurd.
Yes, another constitutional officer you, who would probably be, should be invited to join and update is Supervisor of Elections. I know that across the country, elections have been postponed and canceled and people need to be reassured about how to make sure that they're able to vote and our next election is going to be in the summertime, so she can, the Supervisor of Elections could provide an update and information. And also, something that, that I've done and that I know an awful lot of other people have done since we've been cooped up at home, is we've done an awful lot of spring cleaning, pantry, refrigerator, cabinets, all that stuff and I love my garbage men every single day and I particularly love my garbage men now because they're dealing with so much more garbage than they have been, because everybody's, everybody has time on their hands, so we're all being productive and putting way more stuff at curbside and waste management is just doing a fantastic job of keeping up. Thanks.
I, I agree with that for sure. My garbage pile is quite. Ms. Krista.
The only thing that I have for the board is every once in a while, something will come down to us from the, our lobbyists that we have in Tallahassee and in Washington with a request for a possible letter of support for some effort or something that's, like I said, coming down and I would just like to have a little bit, rather than have to do them and bring them to the board all the time, if we can have some level of approval that if we're, if this request is coming to us from those individuals specifically, that we would be allowed to go ahead and get a letter together for the chair's signature to get that off to those partners. Most of it's related to grant funding or stimulus funding or some kind of opportunity that we would want to jump in front of if we can, so that's all.
Okay. Could I have a motion to that?
You need one?
No, I just, I'm seeing heads nod, so no one is, is opposed to that, so I appreciate that.
All right, cool. Ms. Woods, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I believe we're adjourned, our next.